Oh, thank you.
Chairman Smith?
Yes, dear.
Mrs. Black?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Gory?
Here.
Mr. Grum?
Here.
Mrs. Hadden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Keen?
Here.
Mrs. Shaker?
Here.
Mr. Slater?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Superintendent Dr. Robertson?
Here.
Okay, before we, uh, I entertain the motion to approve the agenda, we got several changes. So first, under, uh, under item eight, board matters, subsection B one, proposed policy revision, second and final read is what be removed. So everyone see that? I'll repeat that again, under board matters, which is, uh, section eight, B one, proposed policy revision, second and final read, we're removing that item. Okay? Now go back to under section two. Uh, we have several amendments here. Administrative business matters, section seven, item D one, approval of fiscal year twenty-six budget. Uh, you have this in front of you. Our finance chair, Mr. Dollar, has requested to amend the memo to include addition of version three budget details. Addition of zero point five FTE to act as board secretary. Good so far? Addition of use of three point five million out of our fund balance to cover two thousand dollar bonus for all of our employees that are not covered by the final state position approval. That's a mouthful. Can you read that again? Addition of the use of three point five million out of our fund balance that will cover the two thousand dollar bonus for all employees not covered by the final state position approval. Okay? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Keen.
Thank you. So for the public's knowledge, uh, the governor has made available two thousand dollars for student-facing instructors, teachers. Not all employees are student-facing. Uh, so to keep with the work that we've been doing over the last few years, uh, to allow a, uh, equitable raise for all, uh, we've we've got, uh, three point five million that we're putting toward, uh, this government, governor's money, so that all can receive their two thousand dollars.
Just, Sue, it's important to note that we did not make those choices. Gary's asked, right, the governor's office, uh, when they passed the law and they added in that section for teachers, they knew who they were, and that's part of the reason we've been waiting so long to pass this resolution is we were waiting for clarity of who those positions are, so we could have a better understanding of the dollar amount needed to do what Gary mentioned, to, to make it equitable across the board. So, uh, I also want to say that this is, is all staff, so it doesn't include clerical. So, uh, that is why we waited so long, and that is what, what that number finally reflects, this number is that we were given of who, who the money is.
You have a few more statements to add? Go ahead.
Actually, I want to speak back to the half-positioned board secretary.
Okay.
It's my understanding that that is, we're not having the board's strategy position that's in that proposed org chart, but that, the person who was appointed to fill that role is going to keep their current position, and then we're adding the half-position back.
No, ma'am, it, it's very close. So, we're adding half-position to board secretary, which you'll see on the org chart where the normal board secretary is, so we have position that this gets approved, proposed, it fills. Uh, the person stepping into that position will do the basically strategic projects like we have set up in operations, and like we have set up on the teaching and learning, uh, side of the building. So it will serve as that same place, and it's the same place the person was in before, in terms of the org chart, uh, that it will be in that kind of middle section where superintendent overseeing finance, chief strategy officer, and that whole line of.
It'll be those down.
Yes, yes. It'll be replaced by point five board, uh, secretary.
Thank you. Okay. Also, one more, uh, addition of converting the associate superintendent to chief tower officer. Addition of converting the associate superintendent to chief tower officer.
That's Dr. Brown.
I, I can speak to that, um.
What?
Yeah, I, I, I can speak to that, Jackie. So, so Dr. Brown's at Brown, chief of HR, um, had an opportunity, deservedly, to get promotion, basically, Jackie, and he has, um, really, and has a sacrifice and willingness to do for the better good where we are from a financial perspective, uh, postponed that, or delayed it, in an effort to do what's better for the good. So, um, just a huge debt of gratitude to him and his willingness to sacrifice for teachers and staff in a very tough, tough season, but that's essentially what it is.
Dr. Brown, I appreciate your servant leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. All right, one more, and now Frank will have them all. Under board matters, section eight, item B one, we need to strike the proposed policy revision, second final read. I may have ordered, I may have ordered.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Ms. Shirley? Uh, just double-checking to make sure I had missed anything. Okay? All right, so with those changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I had another question, I just wanted some clarification on that. School board secretary, that's already, it's going to be combined again with another position?
We can address it when we get to the agenda. Point of procedure, we need to go ahead, if we're going to discuss further, we need to get the motion in a second, in the half session.
So who?
Seven.
Okay.
Now, we will discuss that further when we get to the budget discussion. Everybody got that? Y'all, y'all got that?
Okay. Roll call.
No, they're here, so we get to discussion, right? So let's, let's make sure this is clear. The question that was asked about the position, the point five school board position, will be discussed when they present this final draft, final rough draft, whatever it is, of the spending plan coming up, so you'll get more information about that at that time. Just wanted to make sure we were in the right process of procedure.
Mrs. Black? Yes. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gory?
Yes.
Mr. Grum?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden? Yes. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaker?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Mr. Tillis, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Prince Mole, my, 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 my captain, welcome.
Welcome, all right, I've gotten a lot of advice on what I do in the next few moments. I don't know who to believe, but I believe we're doing the pledge first, so whoever could, please rise for the pledge.
Of the United States of America, in this republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second piece of advice was thirty minutes of meditation. All right, well, when I was asked to do this, I was, I was, you know, humbled and honored because this week, when I was thinking about what they, they kind of talk about, it's a special week, right, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And what better, you know, as I stand here and, you know, talk with you all, to, to think for a moment about that impactful teacher. Often times when I interview for, for staff and teachers and so on, I ask them to, to think about that teacher that, that made an impact on them, and, and then what, what were, what were those qualities that kind of stood out? So think for a minute. This is participation time. I'll call on you, Mr. Allen, in just a, just a second here. Not really, I know you're stressing out. But a lot of times, you know, the, the factors, the things that the qualities that they brought, brought forth, that, that they would talk about were relational, right? There are things that connected with them, it's holding them accountable, it's, it's loving them, it's pushing them, it's expecting more of them than what they felt like, that maybe, or, or they believed that, you know, in themselves, that they, that they could do. And so I, I think it's important, as we think about this week, which again, I mean, an honor to, to just be here this week, um, just all those folks that we have in our building that are just intentionally impacting students every day, um, in all their goals. And it, all it takes is a smile in the hallway, the knuckle bump, the high five, you know, all those different things matter. And it's just an honor to get to serve in human county and be part of that every day. Appreciate you guys letting me work with kids, so, thank you.
So we have several exemplars of excellence this evening, so Dr. Robertson, I think you're at the first.
Uh, Chairman, we, uh, did the Student Leadership Council at four-thirty evening, um, so we're moving on to, uh, the George Kilgore Initiative, which, uh, Dr. Bagby, uh, will present for us.
Good evening, Boris.
Uh, Dr. Bagby, uh, will present for us.
Good evening, Boris. Program of study, but will also continue that program of study into their post-secondary life. This award is a testament to the hard work, dedication, and commitment of those who strive for excellence in career and technical education. The George Kilgore Initiative Award is named after a great friend and teammate who dedicated his life to promoting career and technical education. A proud Saudi-Daisy high school graduate, George Kilgore, worked for Hamilton County Schools in career and technical education for twenty-four years. George has begun his career in education, in education as a graphic arts teacher at Sequoia High School, where he served for fifteen years. George then transitioned to the district office, working as a teacher on special assignment, reporting directly to the CTE director. In two thousand, in, excuse me, in twenty-twenty-one, George was elevated to the title of Career and Technical Education Program Lead. Throughout his time with Hamilton County Schools, George placed success of Hamilton County CTE teachers and students at the forefront of every decision. He helped teachers ensure they were equipped with every resource they needed to be successful and advocate for every student's high school and career options. George served as an instrumental role to four CTE directors over his nine years at the district level, each CTE director constantly commending him on his initiative to take action to get the work done. Without further ado, I am proud to introduce this year's recipient of the George Kilgore Initiative Award that has plans to continue their CTE journey after high school, Peggy Chen. Peggy Chen is a dental assistant student at Dixon High School. Along with being a fantastic fourth grade math student, when I taught her many years ago, she demonstrates an unwavering commitment to excellent, excellence in academics and professional pursuits. Her passion for dental assistance has been evident in the numerous projects and initiatives she has undertaken in her academic career. She has shown exceptional leadership skills, innovative thinking, and she has, uh, and strong work ethic, which all are essential qualities for a successful field in dental science. In recognition of her outstanding achievement, Peggy will be awarded a one thousand dollar assistant scholarship, which she can use to fund necessary equipment and supplies to support her post-secondary journey. We believe that this award will help these recipients achieve their goals and aspirations in their chosen field. Peggy expressed in her application that she will use the funds for textbooks, lab supplies, and dental instruments that she will need throughout her pre-dentistry coursework at the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. I want to congratulate Peggy once again, and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. I also want to commend all the applicants of the George Kilgore Initiative Award for their hard work and dedication. They have all shown that the pursuit of excellence in career and technical education did not only worthwhile, but essential for a better future. George would be proud.
Okay, so, uh, Dr. Sharp, and, uh, I think Brandon, are you here?
Sir, I've come forward. Good evening. Chairman Smith, members of the board, I want to recognize one of our, uh, bus drivers. Mr. Smith, I know you're Mr. Jerry, but, uh, if you don't know Mr. Jerry Green, he has been driving for the district for over fifty years, done an amazing job for the district. I even rode his school bus when I was a kid on a fat truck. But Mr. Jerry Green, awesome driver, and recognition that the district appreciates his service.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thank you for the opportunity to be recognized for my services. I've spent fifty years and some years beside that, beside the Wilbur school bus. In that time, I've met many educators, coaches, band directors, that are lifelong friends. And I'll never forget the service that I've had, the opportunity to lead students that are now grown, have grandchildren, they've had my best, even some great-grandchildren. So, it's been an honor, frankly, and I thank you, Brandon, Dr. Robertson, and the board, for, for recognizing my services, and also, I'd like to thank my wife for keeping me at it, she's also a contractor for twenty-five years, and she's kept me in the saddle, and I thank her for that. Thank you, guys.
It needs to be said, driven over one million miles and has never had an accident. The, the other, I, I want to say, we've mentioned a while ago, uh, Zach Brown and his unselfish, uh, things that he's doing right now in this district. Chad Green, over the years, has, um, all the ministries that I've worked with, has taken kids all over the country, uh, and hadn't charged me and those kids, and so he's enough, so, uh, Jerry, I love you, brother.
Mr. Green, who's going to advocate for the contract drivers? I said, who's going to be the advocate for the contract drivers now? That was you.
I don't know, but, but I want to thank the board for getting the contractors enough to, to do on. Certainly, they contractors, all right, on fifty, provide fifty years of service.
Amen.
Fifty years, that's a long time. Okay, uh, Dr. Freeman, Dr. Rush.
Thank you so much, Freddie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, members of the board, uh, it's my disdain honored tonight to honor, uh, in Teacher Appreciation Week, our teacher librarian. So, speaking on behalf of our eighty hard-working librarians in Hamilton County, uh, we have our Librarian of the Year Award. This award, uh, this year is labeled the Read Twenty Librarian, uh, of the Year, sponsored by the Saudi-Daisy Community Library, is one of our fantastic community partners. Uh, this award goes to librarians who exemplify excellence, uh, in our school libraries, making libraries the center of our schools, promoting literacy for our students, supporting their curiosity, meeting the needs, uh, that exist in lots of different places. Uh, this year's recipient is Charles Raver. Number right here, Charles asked me to say nothing nice about him, but I'm going to have to do so. Uh, Charles is finishing up year twenty-seven at East Saratoga High School. We have seventeen nominations for Librarians of the Year, seventeen of them for Dr. Charles. So he is highly regarded, uh, among his peers, highly regarded with the school staff. Um, Charles, uh, exemplifies both our, our focus on academic press and promoting literacy and reading in school, as well as personalization, making, uh, the library a safe space for every student that needs to try to come, uh, and get the needs they, uh, ask. So, Charles, send your service.
I just want to say that Mr. Raver makes the library home away from home for all West Williams Elementary High Schools.
Okay, Mr. Raver.
Good evening, before I start, I want to apologize for my, in, unfortunately for us, we had a house spirit peppered out today, and I'm a little slow in May, as in outside of the country, so I'll let, I'll let my blue win and my dolphin hat in the car, I feel, so I will just do that much for you. Um, so good evening, uh, board members, Dr. Robertson, uh, my care is in a, uh, for a very special fun reason, and that is to recognize this year's, uh, President of the Year, I want to reach for Hamilton County. It's a true privilege to recognize two colleagues who have demonstrated outstanding, um, performance, leadership, and dedication that has truly impacted not only their school communities, but all of Hamilton County. So this year, we have two to recognize, and the first one will be for our elementary division. And this year's winner of the Principal of the Year for Elementary is Robin Vanbury. She was former, uh, principal of Hallview Elementary, and she's now the current elementary teacher, uh, as our director of teaching and learning, and the K-12 director of leaders.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Tiffany Irving, the Midtown Learning Community Superintendent, and it is my absolute pleasure to just give you a little bit of information about Mrs. Vanbury. Um, it's an honor to stand before you to recognize Miss Vanbury, who embodies the very heart of education. Miss Vanbury is not only a leader, but a true champion for every single child, every teacher, and every family, and the school community. With a vision rooted in kindness, equity, and excellence, she continues to create school cultures where students feel safe, inspired, and empowered to grow. Mrs. Vanbury leads with both courage and compassion, so much compassion. And under Miss Vanbury's leadership, Hardy Elementary soared like the EZR, reaching the academic achievement of a level-five school. This award, more than a title, is a reflection of the countless lives that Mrs. Vanbury continues to touch every single day. Please join me in celebrating her, our Elementary Principal of the Year, Mrs. Robin Vanbury.
I came prepared this time, last time, last time it was a mess. Um, I'm, I'm deeply honored to be recognized as Principal of the Year. This recognition means so much to me, but the true reward has always been the immense joy I have found in leading a school filled with dedicated staff, incredible students, and supportive families. Although my position has changed, I will always be a principal at heart. Thank you for this heartfelt honor.
And it's also my honor to recognize our secondary Principal of the Year this year is Mr. Chris Tillit, Principal of Red Bank High School.
Chairman Smith, ladies and gentlemen of the board, as you can tell, Mr. Tillit does not like the attention. He's been recognized a couple of times, and each time, just with humility, he talks about everybody else, his staff, the teachers, everybody that's there that supports him, and all the other principals of our district. But I did want to say something real quick about Mr. Tillit. When he came up and did the meditation, I thought it was just perfect, because I don't have to say anything, because you can tell what he's about in that moment. And when he talks about that personalization, the connections with not only his staff, his family, his kids, you walk into Red Bank High School and you see it every single day. And not only do you see it, you see it filter out, right? People look to the leaders, and they look to Mr. Tillit, and then you see others following suit. So, can't be more proud of Mr. Tillit, join me in congratulating him.
I would clone Principal Tillit if we give him a chance. He is the model of principle and is an amazing asset to our community, our district, and Red Bank is a better place for him, and we appreciate it. Thank you. And I would be remiss, I did remind everybody that last year, Red Bank graduated more children than they have ever in their history.
Okay, takes us down to our disclaimer, and I think we only have one.
I have a family that works here, I'm a woman. It's not, but I declare that I have a significant relative who works for the school system, and that the board's vote on budget, policies, and et cetera may have an effect on my relative's employment. Even so, I hereby certify that I will pass my vote in the best interest of the school system.
Okay, ask for an approval of our consent agenda. The odds used to be poor. No hands, no lights, roll call.
Mrs. Black? Yes. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Administrative business matters, Dr. Brandt?
Chairman, these are basically teachers eligible for eligible one, and then teachers eligible for tender reinstating and two, and I think that you could probably go along both at the same time. Separately.
Okay. So shall I entertain a motion for teachers eligible for tenure? So move? Second. No lights, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Teachers eligible for reinstating tenure. So move? Roll call.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. It takes us to entertain a motion to name a facility, maybe just sort of public, well, no, just think that will get the.
Yes, sir. We've been moving towards future-ready centers. We have a really great example of future-ready center in Harrison Bay that has a waiting list now and is doing exceptionally well. We've made an adjustment to rename Sequoia, the future-ready center in North River. This is the Gateway Building that everybody's been calling the Gateway Building, and this is just enshrining and honoring two men, John Franklin and Dalton Roberts, for their contributions, and asking the board to approve renaming the Gateway Building into Franklin Roberts Future-Ready Center.
So, motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion and second, okay? Any discussion, I have a lot.
I have a question. Does the Franklin family and the Robertson family know that it is being named after them?
Yes, we, there was a reception held for them, looking over Mr. Franklin at the county before we rolled this out in any capacity. So we've rolled this out kind of a couple places, but I spoke with the families, had a reception for them, so they are informed and, I believe, honored, so.
Just a.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
This is a question for the leadership. When we do these renames, how's, other than this, how's the public made aware? The reason why I'm asking that is because I got a call the other day, Mrs. Black and I talked about this, where, and I remember voting for this, for the Howard Theater to be named after Mr. Roland Carter, but these were some prominent Howard alum that were completely unaware. And so I'm just trying to make sure, like, how are they aware? That's why I asked about Mr. Franklin as well. Um, yeah, I know Mr. Franklin is really into my heart, one of my intours, but.
What are you talking about?
Like, when this stuff happens, so whether it's scaling elementary or whatever, how does the public know, other than just here? Like, do we do some type of media, like, how are they made known? Or that should be up to us in districts, or? Tell us how to better do that, because I was like, we did Mr. Carter a couple of years ago when they was fired, we didn't even know that was happening, and now it's fine.
So it should be on the administration to put out statements. We've worked with the county on this, we did precedent up at Future-Ready Center in North River, Mr. Slater spoke out, so we did a couple precedents with this one. I think what I'm hearing from you is we need to do a better job in the future of putting through multiple mediums, and that's on the administration.
All right, takes us down to some calendar adjustments, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar adjustments.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, and second?
Second.
No lights, no questions, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Okay, it takes us down to approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget for presentation to the Hamilton County Commission.
Discussion.
Okay, I have Mr. Connor, and then, okay, Mr. Connor?
So we've talked a lot about this budget in a lot of different meetings, and a lot of different versions, and heard from a lot of people, including tonight. And the budget that's in front of us is a flat budget, one that doesn't represent everything that we truly need for our schools, for our teachers, for our children. At the end of the day, I've said this, I'm repeating myself, but it appears repeating, is it's our job to make sure that our funding body and our community gets the proper request to our county commissioners. We cannot raise our own funds, we are at the best of our county commission to fund us and to cover what the state funding doesn't, and to do what's right for our community. They're the leaders of our community, as are we, and as we lead, it's our job to lead and to ask for what's right. So I am going to make a motion. Before I say the motion, I just wanted to explain what I'm making a motion about. So, in front of each board member right now is a copy of, amended copy to represent the current dollar amount indifference between the values-based budget and the flat budget that we have on the agenda. So, basically, for the community at large, what the values-based budget is, is what was presented to us in last Wednesday's open meeting by its committee meeting slash budget discussion. I am going to make a motion, again, not yet, there yet, I promise I'll let you know, but I'm going to make a motion to include this with our budget. So we will, by making that motion, what we will do is we will take a vote on the motion, and then if that motion passes, when we take a vote on the, when we take a vote on the budget itself, this motion will be included with that budget, it will be one sent document. Now, it does not, the motion I'm going to make does not make this required, it shows the county commission a roadmap to where we need to be. It is, since we have not had the opportunity really to discuss back and forth, whether in an open meeting, or even send a budget that maybe they send back with notes, we haven't been able to do that. So we need to make sure that the commission knows what it actually takes to educate the children properly, without cuts to needed forward-facing positions, to steal a term from the chair of the commission, where the rubber meets the road, we need to make sure that we're not cutting. And so I am proposing this. So again, when I make the motion, what we will be voting on is whether or not to include this in our next vote for the flat budget with this optional a la carte menu, if you will, of how we could fully fund our schools. So, I move to amend the motion of approving a budget to provide that along with that budget, we also submit a separate list, this one, of additional needs to be funded at the county commission's election. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, if I'm not mistaken, Chair, now we would open discussion on the motion, and once discussion on the motion is finished, we could take the vote.
I think we, for clarification, I think that we discuss the amendment first, correct? So that's what we'd be right now, to discuss Ben's amendment. Say your amendment again, if you would.
I move to amend the motion to provide that along with the flat budget, we also submit a separate list of additional needs to be funded at the commission's election.
You ready on that? Okay, I got a lot of lights, so, Mr. King. So for clarity, this is basically saying, we're going to send them a balanced budget that they can accept, but that it also has possible future needs that they could also address, or that possibly the city commissioners could help with, or in partnership with all three of us, the school system, the commission, and the city council.
So please, as the Chair, do you wish we to answer questions?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So this would specifically be for the county commission to choose items on here. Now, making it public absolutely makes the needs list public, and if there was something that they chose not to fund, that we felt we needed through this document, then I would welcome someone stepping up. But my hope is that the county commission recognizes the fact that we are now, over my, just my term on the board, we are now at an eleven-million-dollar hole of maintenance of effort. So my hope is that they recognize that and realize that we need to have the proper supports in mind. Did that answer your question, Chair? Yes. Okay.
So when you say election, that means we can give this to them, and they can elect to address it, they could elect to address all of it, they could elect to address one of them, or none of them, correct?
Yes, ma'am. This is our needs list, and so my hope would be that the county commission would say, we recognize.
A lot of hope the needs be.
Yeah.
Just go ahead.
I also said at previous meetings that I feel like it's our responsibility to advocate for what our students and our staff need beyond just the goal of presenting a flat budget, but it's our responsibility to advocate for our students and our staff. This list does that. There are different items for the public who don't know, to reinstate the half position, two-thousand-dollar bonus for all the employees, in addition to the employees that were left out of the state's bonus, a step longevity increase at two percent across the board raise, compensation study, complete phase one, capital maintenance, and two-and-a-half percent of employees back to central office staff. That is a list of things that help out for our school system to function at the greatest possible level. For me, I don't feel good about voting for a flat budget without attaching this as options for our county commission, because I believe our staff and our teachers deserve the pay increase that they have earned. They are professionals, we should pay them that way, we should respect them that way. I do not feel good about sending them a budget without the option of increasing their pay, so that they, within their families, can address the same issues that all of us are facing, which is rising costs of everything. So ultimately, that's why I'm supporting the addition of this list.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Black, Mr. Grun?
Well, there's some things in the amendment, if you want to call it that, that I could agree with, but as long as I'm on this school board, I will not vote for a percentage across the board raise. I just will not, because we've had this argument before, I've stated my case before, that those at the top get a much higher raise than those at the bottom. And I want, I will always vote for more funding to go to schools and personnel to deal and interact with students every day. So I can't support, you know, two-and-a-half percent of employees back into central office staff, compensation study, phase one for five million dollars. You know, we've done this before, recently, so I just can't go with this. I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think our county commissioners have gotten probably just as many emails and phone calls as we have, when in my opinion, the proposed initial cuts to the budget were deliberately meant to cause the greatest havoc in our community, when we never really intended to do those things. So, for example, we can't tout school choice. So, for example, we can't tout school choice and then destroy transportation to the magnet schools at the same time. The system that we built up to support school choice. Now, maybe that is a discussion for another time, as we continue to grow our future-ready availabilities throughout the district, to those four initially sites, and we developed the gateway building, which I would really like an update on that, because that's a key thing that the board has been supporting this whole time, and the county commission, along with the mayor. So whenever anybody, anybody brings up a values-based judgment adjustments, the first question I have is what values and whose values? So this board has to decide on this document what our values are. I can't support.
Ms. Thomas?
I have a question on here. The compensation study, complete phase one, has it already begun? Do you want it to, and you stop at midpoint, or that's five, that's five million dollars?
I'm going to ask for a little bit of assistance on that one.
Sure, and that, stop me if I'm doing anything wrong. We have already completed the study, so this is not to complete the study. We have recommendations from the study to address things that they found. So addressing the first phase of that would cost five million dollars.
Me, another possible increase for people whose compensation is not where the study said it should be.
Oh, we have a great one pager, not made by me, by the way. That actually talks very good. So phase one would crop off employees to the new salary schedule, implement new structures for the teacher and general employee schedules, transition roles historically placed on teacher's schedule to the general employee's schedule, like SLPs, school sites, school administrators, and clearly differentiate between roles requiring certification and classified roles.
I would certainly want to see the details on all of that. Jack, your live zone here.
Yeah, I do have some, so I just want to be clear, so that compensation study, which will give more money then, plus a two percent across the board, plus a step longevity increase, plus a two thousand one time for employees, all of that, but we still, all of these are mainly raises for employees, so I just want to make sure.
So actually, let me, let me do this, in all seriousness. We are already voting on this three point five being in there. So everyone go ahead and mark that one off, because that's already in the whole, we have already voted to include that. So in reality, this number over here should be, map that on, two, two. Eight, two, two, eight, yeah. With three point five, yeah, two, 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 eight. So again, what you just asked, Ms. Thomas, is the third item on here is already in what we're voting on, so that can be taken off. And then the second part, and I'm answering you and I'm answering Larry, the two percent across the board is actually a contract that we would be honoring through PECCA with the students, with the teachers, because we entered into a three-year contract to agree to their separate raises for three years, if I'm not mistaken. So Mark Hill, is this the second year? She's, oh, she's at the party, I'm sorry, she's celebrating our teachers. The previous board, it wasn't even the board, Dr. Robertson, would you like to talk about the agreement?
Well, I, I think that if I can start back, and I, these values were things that we put in front of the board as we were getting to the end of a flat or a balanced budget, right? So these were things that, you remember, you know, I said they were things not all we should consider. So to be clear there, the step increase is part of PECCA, and we have a, had a meeting earlier and put out a joint statement with HCEA and community management and teachers, that of course they would want to see a step increase if they understand, you know, given the budget here. What we would like to get to point, and I've said this to many of you, is we, we feel like we're at a place where we have the right staffing, right programming. If we get additional funding, what we would want to invest in is the wages of our employees. To Mr. Brown's point, we've always, the percent or the flat, we had this debate last year, we could take that percent, turn it into a flat, and have that discussion, right? It's really just saying what amount of money would be. And, and like, if we're talking about things that take off, if it helps the board get to a place of saying like, we're willing to pass a flat budget and take a list behind it, I'd say, let's take off the two and a half percent back to central office, if that helps get to a, to a common place.
Mr. Chairman, the inter, correct. So Mr. Connor clarified that the two thousand one time for all employees should come off, because Ms. Black seconded. Is Black, are you, do you have clarification?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Thomas, your live, so I'm.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm, I'm struggling with all, it's just a little bit. I mean, I, I, I think we're close, but we, you guys have worked so hard, and have done everything, I think, that pretty much that we asked you to do. It looks like. Thank you for all of you guys that have worked so hard to make this happen. I guess where I have a struggle, Mr. Connor, and we're, you and I agree on a lot of things. A lot of things we don't, a lot of things we do, we're real close here. I'm just worried about the optics. You, on, on this document you gave to us, it says an alternative budget. We, it would seem to me, we gotta take a budget up there, one budget, not an alternative, a budget. That's, that's a question, which Ben.
Yes, sir.
All right, so let me, let me, let me finish my paragraph. I kind of use the analogy of, of, if you fuck with NCAA basketball and you follow bracketology, and they'll take you the sixty-four teams that are in, and then they take you the, the next four that are in. It, it would seem to me that the best thing to do is to take our budget that we're about ready to vote on, that y'all have worked so hard on, that's balanced, that some difficult choices have had to be made, and, and some things have been put back in, that we asked to be put back in, such as bonus for teachers and, and our Washington alternative, and transportation, and we put all that stuff back in. So it's been tough, back and forth, back and forth. It just seemed to me that we take that budget up there, but at the same time, when you make your presentation like you do every year, that you have the next four in, or the next, whatever, six, seven, whatever these are, rather than, than tying these two together, I, I, that's where my struggle is.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's what Mr. Connor is saying. I want to make it clear, like, the formatting and the wording of this, if you remember, I, I brought this, so saying it's an alternative budget was a week old. I mean, we've got a flat budget in front of you, I think, and I don't want to put words, I'll turn it over to Mr. Connor, but I think what he's saying is exactly what you're saying, but you use these bullet points, and you can, we can put in another document and call them first four in, whatever. Sorry, that, Connor, I need to speak for you.
No, sometimes you get it right. So let me be really clear, this needs to be sent with the budget, is what I'm asking. And, and I want to make sure that I'm saying this correctly, this needs to be sent with the budget so that it is options for the county commission that they can, that they can say, I want to put this in, I, we, we, like, I'm just, since we're talking about phrasing, they can say, we also value the reinstatement of these half positions at every school. So we're going to put that on there. But if we don't add this list of needs, and we talked a little bit about phrasing, I pick on phrasing, if we don't add this list of needs to it, then there's no option for them. They just say, they, they, we don't, because we're passing a budget, it is allowed to have options as a part of it. I'm asking that we pass Mr. Dory's flat budget, and that we send this list of needs that is essentially an à la carte menu, but hopefully one that they share some of the same values with us, and choose to put some of these in, your first four in, if you will. So that is what I'm asking. I welcome you to mark off budget if you want to, but it would be sent with our budget. So again, let me state it one more time and try to be as plain as possible. We will pass a budget, following the law and sending a budget law, but we will send them this list of needs items that they can choose, again, as written in the motion, if they elect to pass, they, they may pass. I feel like I might have used a thousand words, or you used a hundred, but I'm saying the same thing you are. I like to, I'm really good at using a thousand words, we're tempted.
You had to convince me, yeah.
So.
It, it would, it just seems to me, and I've, I've watched you do it, you and your predecessor, every year, I've watched you do it. You go up there and you make your presentation, and then, then you talk about other needs.
So if, if I may try to say, just from the context of presenting it to the county commission, what I hear is that we have a, we call it flat, we call it balanced, we've got a proposal in front of you right now, this is flat or balanced, right? That gets approved. I take that to the county commission and present it, but just as you said, after I present the flat budget, there's another slide that says, but here are also some needs that are not in this budget that the board recognizes as needs. It's not necessarily, almost an addendum to a budget, but the flat budget gets passed, that's what gets presented. And then, just as you said, the first four in, it gives the county commission that if they say, hey, we want to, we want to contribute to the two thousand dollar.
So we're not disagreeing, I, I, it said that, I guess, I don't understand why that needs to be a part of, a, a part of the original motion to approve the budget. I, I guess that's where my struggle is.
I prefer it was legal, and if, if it's a part of the same thing, then it makes it options that they can immediately choose, instead of items that then the county commission would have to go and create a new resolution to then fund this. And, and I'll come full circle, I'll come all the way back, right now, we're talking about twenty-two point eight million, give or take a penny or two. We would not, we would be talking about eleven million if we, the maintenance of effort was there for the past two years. And we're not really having much of this conversation. And that's something I've been saying a lot, is that we do need to have a conversation to figure out the right funding. We need to figure out a percentage base instead of a dollar base, but right now, we need to send this, in my opinion, and it has to be attached so that they have the option to add these things in more easily, and, and I'll be, again, phrasing, this is a roadmap for county commission, so that they can get to where they need to go. And, and I'll say this out loud, too, we don't have that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, the nineteenth, we'll be presenting our, if we pass the budget tonight, we'll be presenting in front of the county commission on the nineteenth. I would welcome and be ecstatic to have a joint conversation with the commission between now and the nineteenth, to talk about my reasons, our reasons, for why we want the things in our budget, oh my gosh, I love that. And hopefully, that would make it so that it would be easier for us, for them, to, to pass what we need. It may fall to being the flat budget that is all they consider we need after that meeting, but again, we don't know yet. It's our job to send what we, what we need for running schools. We're sending a flat budget because of this deficit, but we need to show them what we, we need, we, we have to, it's our job. We were elected to tell the county commission what we truly need, and this document attached to the budget shows them what we need. And in all honesty, I'd rather pass the budget with this as the budget, but I'm making a concession here to try to do what's best and showcase what our schools need.
Dan Dorrie?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Connor, you, you know, I appreciate and respect your position, and we all fundamentally agree that there, there are difficult decisions being made, and, you know, these, these, these suggestions are absolutely valuable. I think it's naive of us to, to consider that the county commission is not aware of these, I mean, they are, they're listed, I mean, they are, they, conversations have had with multiple county commissioners. You know, we, there's one budget, it's a balanced budget, and that's where I'm going to hung up on is, 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 all of these are important, I agree with them. We have, in my opinion, and I know we disagree on this piece, we have a fiduciary responsibility to have a balanced budget, so.
Budget that we, it's not a balanced budget, that's not in the term, right? I'm not, unless I've just been crazy for the last ten minutes.
Well, okay, so you, you do have to account for incoming revenue.
Right.
And so you have to make a, you have to make a proposal that, that allows for incoming revenue. So we, we use word fiduciary, that's where I got hung up. You're asking a policy question, it gets back to something that Mr. Connor said for, for two months. What sort of budget should the, like, the board submit to the commission? By law, you have to account for revenues that are coming in, and so if you, if you ask for X, you have to match it with revenue from a certain source.
Right, but I want to make sure that people understand, because I mean, right now, everybody, so many truths out here, that I want to make sure people understand. Um, second to that, my question is, I guess my statement is, to my, my, my chair right here, um, when you're talking about your, um, not sure about the document, um, being added with the budget. When I submitted my budget for my department at the city, I submitted appendices, supplemental information for you to review to see what I needed. I submitted a balanced budget, but we, because we were at the flat line, but I also submitted what my staff asked me for, which was above the flat line, because we know that budgets go through several iterations, and when they go through several iterations, depending on what the priority is of the mayor, I'm speaking for the city government, based off the priority of the mayor, the council, the citizens, as they're going through iterations, things become priority, based on strategic plans, based on needs, so forth and so on, and so all of that information I wanted them to have, so that if some money was freed from somewhere else, and something that I had put in place was something that was priority, then there it was, and they have to come make an ass of it. Now, whether they did something with it or not, but I had it for them, so that in the event when they took it to council, they had everything they needed to support that ass. And so I wanted to share that, because I think for me, the only way I'm going to vote for a budget tonight is if this goes with it, because I feel like they know, Mr. Dorrie, you're right, they know that the five seventy-seven, they know that's what is balanced, flat, without one dollar. But what they need to know is six hundred and three is what we need. And I think if we never show them that, then they're always going to say, well, you didn't tell us we needed that. And I've lived long enough to know that. I'm not crazy, and I can assume people are listening and hearing. But in this day and time, I am no longer in the business of making assumptions, because I am no longer in the business of becoming the ass, as my grandma would say. Because when you assume, you make yourself, and excuse my language to all the people in the public, with children listening, so forth and so on, even my own child, so on. But that's just a sort of colloquialism, and everybody's heard it. I don't want to assume that the District Five Commissioner, because I'm speaking for District Five, knows that. I don't want to assume that. I don't want to assume that any of these commissioners know that. I don't want to assume that you all know that. I want to be sure that you are informed and educated on what the need is. And then from there, you make your decision, and they make their decision. But I don't want to assume that, because we can allow them to assume, and their priority may be different from what our leadership's priority is, or what our schools, communities need. or what our schools, communities need. So, I'm just gonna say that I said there last week, not voting for a budget that doesn't show them what we need.
Ms. Carter.
Couple things. If we're getting hung up on the same, same budget, we can change it to values-based investment opportunities so that our county commission can choose to invest in education because that is also an option that they don't always have. But if I, and if I were them and I was voting on extra funding, I would want to know who should prioritize and invest in education. I go to community meetings all the time, I get asked all the time, when do we get to vote? I prioritize education, raise my, do whatever you need to do, I wanna fund public schools. So, this is an option for them. And if it's voted on by the body that is sending the budget, it has, in my opinion, more weight than an extra slide presented by Dr. Robertson, not to take away from your authority.
But he don't get a vote.
But you don't, like, we're the ones that are supposed to approve the budget. So if we're asking for extra, we need to vote on what we're asking for. And if there are amendments to this list for folks that you want, if you want to remove something from this list, let's have that conversation. And this list is, like, we can adjust this just like we can adjust our budget, but let's have the conversation of sending a budget with options for investment in public education that are a priority for us in this school system, that we have approved. Because if not, if they don't really know what we're asking for or what that money is gonna be spent on, it's a lot easier to say no than if we tell them how it's gonna be used. That gives them a lot more options as a voting body because it is, they're the funding body for the entire county. It, like, they have to weigh, and if, like Ms. Jones said, if they're weighing priorities, if they have to weigh and say, like, oh, well, the priorities, instead of it just being like an extra dollar amount to schools, they can say, oh, we think, you know, raises are, for teachers and staff, are more important than this other item in another piece of our budget. We want, we have rather put the money over here. It's easier for them if they have this to look at. So if we wanna discuss, if folks wanna take something off, if there's something on here that you don't like before we send it, that's a discussion that we can have, and we can amend this list as well. But ultimately, you don't get what you don't ask for. And I want all of our elected representatives at the county level to have the information that they need and the option to invest in education like we're asking them to do.
Ms. Shaffer.
We are proposing or passing a budget that is a values-based budget. We are saying as a board what our priorities are. If we wanted to make one of these on this list our priority, then we should do that in our budget. We shouldn't be asking the commission to tell us what our priority is. We shouldn't be putting them in that position. So if we want to add back the half position in every school, then we should have taken deductions somewhere else out of our own budget. We have a large budget. We have more money than we did two years ago in the back of Santa Lucia students. Give millions, 577 million. So if we want to prioritize these things, then we need to do it, not put that on the commission. So I can't support this for that reason.
Ms. Slater.
I agree with Joe. First of all, we voted for Dr. Robertson to bring us a balanced budget, and he did. Attaching anything to it is not what we asked for. Now, if we want to go in front of commission and just say something like, by the way, here's a wish list that we would love to have, okay? But I don't think we can attach this to a balanced budget, it's not what we voted for him to bring us.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes, I think, you know, we've been going back and forth on the wording of all of this. I do, we did ask Dr. Robertson to bring us a balanced budget, and he brought that. However, I think, I think it's turning indicated that we can't attach this to the budget. This is just an addition form that we're sending. And if we are saying to the county, I don't think it's anything wrong with saying to the county commission, here is the balanced budget that Dr. Robertson brought us. However, we would love for you to consider our true needs. And this is what we thought, and this is what they truly are in present to them as not necessarily attached to the budget. But kinda like what all of us are saying, a wish list. And maybe it's the wording that we're trying to do, but to just put it in layman's terms for me. And what I think I'm hearing is that we have, we're presenting you this balanced budget. However, we love for you to consider what we truly need. We balanced it because it was, he balanced it because it was requested. But that's truly not the need of the Hamilton County School System. That's, that's how I'm looking at what this form says, and I think maybe he can, I don't know, I guess it's be reworded or whatever it needs to be said, but that's all we're asking. Am I clear on that, just in layman's terms, because we keep going back and forth? I'm just layman's terms, is that what we're wanting to do?
That, that's what your motion does.
Okay.
I just wanna. Isn't that correct?
It does, and, sorry, I'm, am I next?
Go ahead.
I'll go straight into it then, okay?
Mr. Connor, Mr. Slater, if I can just say, I have to be sure that, because maybe I have the motion wrong, but I'm gonna tell you what we've got. So, I have a motion for Mr. Connor, seconded by Todd Miss Black, to amend the motion approving the budget to submit, along with that budget, a separate list of additional needs to be funded at the commission's election. My understanding is that the list comes from this document, that we're not submitting this document. It's just a list, if I got that right?
The document could be, I have listed what we need from our previous one, so essentially, yes.
We've got a list, but it's not.
And that speaks to the next item I was gonna say. I'm hearing a lot of people talk about how Justin should go and Dr. Robertson should stand there and talk about what it is, but what we want. But we're assuming, and assumptions are not facts. We actually have to take a vote on it because we, the royal we, this board, can't assume that he knows what we want until we have put it in the record and voted on it. So, as a board, he's our employee, but he's not our voice. Our vote is our voice. So we have to vote on it in order for him to know what to take. So, I believe that that is dead correct. Mr. Bennett? Okay. And if we don't vote on something, technically, he can't actually take anything because he's assuming. We can't do that.
So, I'll give that to you. Kinda play this out for me to say.
So.
Wait a minute, sorry. So, let, for a minute, let's say that this motion that Mr. Connor has made fails. And so we go back and we vote on the, the original budget, and that passes. Are we, at that point, do we have to have some type of vote to say to him when he does his presentation to the commission that he lets, makes it very clear to the commission, we'd like to have an additional 20, whatever it is, 20, 23 million, and here's what we'd like to do?
Yes, sir, because without the board speaking to the appropriation request, then the commission doesn't have anything to attach the appropriation to. Now, alternatively, I suppose what could happen is if Dr. Robertson were to say, here are some other things that we might be able to do. The commission could come back to us and say, well, send us that list. But the, but the commission cannot appropriate funds in a vacuum, it has to be attached to a request from us.
So it would just eliminate a back and forth, which is time, and it would, it would prevent being, like, the budget being pushed up time at the end of the year, like it has the last couple of years, then we only take action earlier.
To be clear about that, so as long as we have an operations budget that is approved, then we are in compliance with the law. So, as a, for instance, if the, if the, if the board at some point on the road said, we wanna put capital maintenance back, and the commission agreed to fund that, that is not, that is not as time-sensitive, obviously, as the rest of the operations budget. But on the other hand, if you were looking at some of these other votes that's up on.
Okay, let me go to Gary and then play Sharkun Keith.
Well, after listening to everything, I almost wonder if it wouldn't be more productive to separate the two and vote on the balanced budget first and then vote on the wish list, needs list, value-based list, second.
It's not attached. Scott just said what, it won't be attached to the appropriation, so they can't.
It can if you then make an amendment to attach it after the budget is done, after that's voted.
If I could reword what you said, Mr. Keith. So, I think you're removing to separate the two items, like the budget and the list. And that would require the board a second, and then the board to vote on that, in which case it's now separate. You go to the budget, and you come back to the list. To the point that I made earlier, at some point in time, if you want the commission to consider this list, the board does have to vote to break it, that's for certain.
But the question is, if we went back to the original agenda and voted on a balanced budget, and then Mr. Connor made a.
Well, if you, if the board wanted to separate this, all it takes is a motion at a second and a majority, and the amendment is set aside over here, you go back to the main motion. If it succeeds or fails, and if it succeeds, then you come to this, to this list of additional priorities, right? Because then the board votes on this, okay?
Isaac.
Mr. Connor, just to send that.
You'd be voting to separate the two issues.
I move to separate the two issues.
Second.
Can we, are we in a middle of a?
So the, so the board is clear, then just we restate the motion. Ms. Shaffer has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Slater, to separate Mr. Connor's amendment to get it separately from the main motion. And so if the board votes to separate these, then we would go back to the main motion, and then we would take Mr. Connor's motion separately, okay? But it would take a majority of the board to separate it out.
Okay, so the motion to hold out is to separate, and it's been duly seconded. So, discussion about that. Okay, I'll place.
Well.
Recognize you first.
Well, I do. I just wanna say, you know, we didn't really have discussion, I don't believe, about what the, on this list that the board may be because I would have added exceptional education on here as a wish list, and it's not on here. And I know Coach traces have been, you know, talked about before, and I'm sure other things. I almost feel like we need to wait to the next finance committee and discuss as a board what we actually want on our wish list as a board.
It's on there. It's on there. Except it's in the balanced budget.
It's in the balance, not on the additional funds for exceptional.
No, but I think your point is, like, if you have this conversation, you want to say we needed a billion additional dollars to add to what we're already investing in, except.
Right, so, extra funds, other things, the traces.
You're, you're.
She didn't tell me.
Discussing the next question. So, basically, to be completely clear, in order to gain my support for the budget at all, I need to know that this is attached. So waiting to vote on this means I won't vote for the budget because there's no guarantee. As Ms. Thurman used to put it, we can make the front door the back door, however she used to say it. I don't know what will happen at the next vote. So unless these are tied together, it doesn't have my support because this is that important.
Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Even if, even if it's going to the commissioners, but just not attached to the board, you, it has to be attached. Even though you all, from what I think I hear you say, it's separate anyway, right? Because all we're required to do is.
Yes, ma'am, but what Mr. Connor speaks himself, but I understand, he's saying he's connecting the two issues because he wants these items to be funded. So it'd be attached, it's attached in his motion, but the list is not attached to the budget.
Oh.
Does that make sense? His motion's connecting the two, but they will vote the commission separately.
To answer, yes, there would, this would be an addendum to our budget, it is possible. But to restate, as I was asked to, I will not support the budget, the flat budget, unless I know that this optional thing is there. I won't, because that's not the right thing to do. That's not why I, the people that put me here, do their votes, want the right thing done, and that's not the right thing.
Okay, so I have no more lights. So, we're ready for a roll call, to make sure they are by our standards while we're voting, while we're voting out.
We're voting on Ms. Shaffer's motion, seconded by Mr. Slater, to separate Mr. Connor's proposed amendment from the main motion, and to take up his amendment separately after the main motion.
Is everybody get that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Black?
No.
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mr. Darty?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddon?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Cameron Smith?
Yes.
Motion here.
So now, we go back to our original motion.
And then we'll take it, Mr. Connor.
And then we take, uh, Mr. Connor. So our original motion, that was, that was motion and duly seconded, was approval of fiscal year 2026 budget for presentation to the Hamilton County Commission.
If you were.
If you.
Right.
With the amendment the administration gave.
Yeah. We're not, okay? I have no lights, so.
Hold on, Mr. Connor.
Not now.
No. Then we're gonna go back.
Hold on, actual point of procedure, point of procedure. Since my motion was second, it was separated. But technically, since the motion was done inside, we could vote on the motion and then vote on the budget. Am I correct?
That's what I thought we were doing.
That's the reason, that's why, what I said right after you spoke was that I thought maybe it needed to be after the budget vote, and if it does, then, then I'm not voting for this budget, but.
So, a motion to sever, take, take the subordinate motion. Just, takes, takes the subordinate motion and separates it, sets it aside, and if the concept is separate, I'm of this, okay? So the, so the main, you go back to the main motion, the previously moved main motion. We've got a check, and you're gonna pick your words.
I am. There's a lot of words in here, just give you just a second, but. So, my motion is to amend, let's quickly, may be desirable to apply similar process to something already adopted by law. It's the amend.
While you're looking, Mr. Connor, I've got a couple of lights. Ms. Aiden?
Well, I want a discussion about the budget itself, is what I'm waiting on, because.
The, the, the original budget?
Yes.
Well, while he's looking for.
We go ahead.
Do you want to ask that question afterwards?
Okay, well, I had several things I wanted to mention about the budget, okay? First thing. you all are doing and how valuable, valuable it is and how consensual I think it is to, to have the communities in that line chain of command or responsibility, so. The second thing, I just want to say it's really too late, I think, for the budget discussions because just this past week, I've heard from multiple people people about student success planning that and this concessions, and I appreciate that. What we really wanted, the community and lots of public response, and we heard it tonight, what we really wanted was what we had before and what was working well. And so I have to say that I am disappointed it's not back to what we had in the beginning. And I'm disappointed I didn't have more support from the administration and the boards on this. But concessions have been made. And so we will just work on this, this continuing year. And maybe I would like for people to continue to reach out to me and so we can work on issues as they arise. And I know you put five hundred plus in the budget, five hundred thousand, to address needs as they arise in exceptional education. So I appreciate some of what you did to put that in for exceptional, exceptional education. And I think time wise, I'll just keep it there.
Mr. Jeremy, may I interrupt for just
You may.
I stand corrected, I was, I was going through my, my parliamentary procedure. Mr. Connor's motion takes priority over the main budget because it was separated out.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, so we need to vote now on
On his list.
On the
Well, we, so to be clear, he had, he wanted to submit a separate list along with the budget, so the, the board voted to separate the two issues.
Okay.
His issue takes priority, and so now the board is debating whether to send a separate list. We're going to stay back.
Not that I see, but
This, this is very kind of like, just like talking layman terms and see if this makes sense. Yeah, I, I think that we're actually saying
The same thing.
The same thing, it's just the order. Like, if, if we were to vote on, vote on the budget first and then vote on his separate items to bring a list, all we're doing is voting on the list first and then the budget. Reason Mr. Connor wants to do this is because for him to support budget, he wants to board the board to bring a separate list. That separate list is not attached to budgets, it's not part of the balanced budget. It is a flat budget that we will be approving, that if this goes, will be a, a separate list that then allows the county commission that they can come alongside us and say, we want to contribute to that two thousand dollars, it doesn't have to come back to this body to get approved.
That's correct. I'm good with that, that, I guess my only concern is going to be is everybody good with this list? Are there some things you want to add to it or delete from it or?
I'm not happy with the list as it is right now. That's why I think we need maybe a separate meeting or during finance or some other meeting to discuss what's on the list because it's, um, extra funds for exceptional education are not on there, so to raises, I mean, we're
Add to it or delete from it or?
I'm not happy with the list as it is right now. That's why I think we need maybe a separate meeting or during finance or some other meeting to discuss what's on the list because it's, um, extra funds for exceptional education are not on there, so to raises, I mean, we're don't have as a budget.
So are you asking to add, if, 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 if exceptional education was cut, to add that back onto this list?
Mm-mm.
What are you asking? Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
Well, I'm, I'm not really asking anything, I'm just saying I'm not happy with this list and I don't think we have time right now to devise a list that would, that we all agree on.
Mr. Dougherty?
I agree with Lisa, I mean, there's probably a lot of things that other board members collectively probably want to add in there, Mr. Slater, I know, um, Coach Stack is obviously important to you. I think this is probably a more complicated scenario than maybe originally was survived, albeit important, but I just don't know if we're going to solve it here tonight. So I'd like to make a motion to table and reconvene on this conversation on a later date.
Second.
Are we going to table the budget?
Sure, what, what do we table?
No, you meant
They're telling you to table the budget, I mean, you try
We're not able.
So they're making a motion to table
To table Mr. Connor's
Mr. Connor's motion.
Correct. And I, I've got Mr. Dougherty as a, please.
So, uh, I got a couple of lights, Jones, but that
Sure. So we've already all mentioned the time is, is of the essence, and we also don't have another meeting where we will vote on anything before we get to present this budget to the schools. I'm sorry that you guys don't completely agree with the list, but as was mentioned also, in the next meeting, we can absolutely add to it or add other things we'd like to wish for. I went off of what had been presented to us and what got us to the most needs based in our, in that presentation. And so much so has it been considered needs based, that one of the items on my list has already been put into the flat budget somehow. It's, we added three million dollars to the flat budget and it's still flat. So I'm asking that we approve this list to send so that we can so that we have a roadmap for the county commission, so that we have sent something along with, with this flat budget that shows, hey, we want everyone to be cognitive that we don't think we can do the job that the children deserve with the flat budget. These are the items that we need. This is the moment to do that because we're passing a budget. I have given us a list of things that are values based that we need, that we are considering to be implement and added wonderfulness to our children's lives. Sorry for getting passionate and not mixing words up, but we owe it to the constituents and the students to give the commission a roadmap to where we need to be.
Mr. Keen?
I'm just asking for a point of clarification, I guess, so when, when we say we're tabling it, are we, are we tabling the motion but still voting on the budget? Or are we tabling it to come back at a later date?
So this is the form.
So, so so if, if this motion to table Ben's motion, as we go back to the original motion, and that was to approve the, the twenty-six budget.
So we wouldn't present what we're saying we need at all, because we tasted it though, because that means we're not going to present that effort to them at all. I understand, I understood that we're going to separate, but we're still there, you're asking then to, to not send the list at all, right? You're going to table the list that we currently have and not send anything, right? That's what you're asking, that we table the list.
What I'm
I'm being, you make the
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, uh, what, what I'm suggesting is maybe we find some time next week, early next week, virus
That's what I'm trying to say, honey, and I'm, I'm not coming to no meetings.
Oh, you want to raise, why are we taking all out?
I'm going to have to take T D up.
Okay.
Table the budget, you could table it and vote in June.
Ms. Black?
The way I understand it is based on what you've said, if the county commission wanted to fund raises or give us extra money to spend, it has to be attached to something. And if we don't send a list, then, then it removes the opportunity for them to give us additional funds above the flat revenue neutral budget.
Yes, ma'am. Now, subject to the understanding that we can always talk.
Sure.
So, so, you know, whenever we have the joint meeting, um, or if the commission meeting, the commission will look over at at this, at this plan over there, um, if they indicate that they are of a mind to give more money, then obviously the board can come back, they can prioritize. So you'll know that, that an appropriation would be granted, but strictly speaking, Ms. Black, you're right. It postpones the actual appropriation, yes, ma'am.
But if we send them the revenue neutral budget without asking for anything else and they approve it, isn't it done?
Well, yes, ma'am, but the board can always ask for a budget amendment. So, so you need, you have to have an operations budget to start with this year. But, but let's suppose that, that the finance committee meets and works through and decides, you know what? We've thought about this, we really do need to add back that million dollars in capital maintenance. We've thought about this, we really need to do that step increase. There's nothing that precludes the board from making an additional appropriation request, even the outside, the regular budget, obviously. But you always have the authority to take budget amendments. Usually we're taking amendments to true things up.
But it would also come after they've voted on the entire county budget, so it's remove the opportunity from them to prioritize one of these items on the list over something else in another department's budget.
Operationally, that is, that, that, that's a valid point, that, um, there's a window of time where they can work things into the entire county budget, that's a, that's a valid point, yeah.
Okay. Just so we are all clear.
Ms. Connor, are you
Oh, yeah.
What are we voting on?
So the motion on the floor now is to table this list.
Your list.
So to answer Mr. Dougherty's question about could we meet next week to talk, that's fine, we can talk, we still can't tell Dr. Robertson to take anything, because we can only vote in an action item meeting. We get one of those month and let's call a special meeting.
You can call, you can do that.
You can do that.
Which we would have to call a special action item meeting
Right.
during graduation to, to do that, when we have a list in front of us. The second thing is, I, I've already referenced her once, but we can do anything we want via vote, including add in stipends for the coaches. If that's really part of what we want to make our true values that we want to send to them. If we're just looking for a list of everything that we absolutely want, that list could be ten pages. I was trying to get to the nitty gritty of what we need to, and again, I'll repeat, so much so that if, one of the items that I already had listed has been added to our budget, so clearly, these weren't just, and that's not, sorry, clearly, these weren't just things that I was on a whim going, that'd be great. I thought through them, they were presented to us, they are items that the team has thought would be good. But I'll, I'll finish with saying, we are waffling over this when we could send a message that we are giving you a flat budget, but the needs of the schools remain and we need to show them the need. Ms. Black has mentioned it a couple of times, as Jones has said it a couple of times, we, we need to give them the roadmap to what we need, not want, need, to better service our children, and that's where we're at.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dougherty?
Yeah. Mr. Connor, to that I would say, when the county commission starts really deep diving their budget, once they've got everything on the table, if somehow, some way, which would be amazing, they come up and say, hey, we've got X amount of extra money, and see if we're able to do X, Y, Z. We're going to be notified, and we have the ability to call that special session meeting, and then we can really discuss it. At this point, we don't know what's possible, we don't know if it's six million extra, what do you do, we don't know if it's flat, like we are. So that's, that's, we have the ability to call that and, and discuss it and have a better discussion outside of, of, of this larger vote on the budget, get it moving through it.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, it is, uh,
Motion to table Table the, uh, Mr. Connor's, uh, list.
Duly seconded, no more lights, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
No.
Mr. Connor?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Ms. Haddon?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now we go back to our original motion, which is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. And it was duly motion and seconded, as I recall. No lights, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
No.
Mr. Connor?
No, I'm going to stand up, we need to put the right budget in front of our commission, we'll not stop saying that.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Ms. Haddon?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Eight, three, motion carries.
Okay, takes us down to, uh, uh, board matters. Those are all first reads there, I believe, so it's nothing to, uh, to vote on. What we scratched, the proposed policy revision. So it takes us down to, uh, consideration of resolution, and I'll let, uh, or ask if, uh, Ms. Connor, if you would speak to this for us.
This is the resolution for us to accept the two thousand dollar bribe that was added into the voucher bill. So if we, this is the first part of the monies that was set up to help them pass the voucher bill. We did not decide who would get this fund, took us three months for them to even tell us who would get it. We now have that list, it's how we were able to delineate the three million dollars that you guys liked on my list, uh, to put into our budget. So, uh, this resolution is basically just minutia. We are, by, by resolving to this resolution, we are saying to the state that we accept the funds for the two thousand dollars for the people they've identified. This has nothing to do with our budget that was just passed that pays the other teachers. So in theory, if we don't accept this resolution, the first round of teachers wouldn't get that money. We, we accepted it for all the other, for clericals, everything else, so if we did, if we don't approve this resolution, we shot ourselves in the foot.
So entertain motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Uh, got a couple of lights, uh, these might be old lights.
No.
Okay. Keen?
All right, so I, I'd like to thank Mr. Connor for understanding this because the public might not realize it, but there will be districts around the state of Tennessee that don't understand the legal jargon and will not act by presenting a resolution, and their teachers will lose that two thousand dollars. We had to legally present a resolution to be able to accept that money for the teachers, so thank you.
No more lights, roll call.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Grun?
Yes.
Ms. Haddon?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, takes us down to events and announcements, I believe everybody has a, a calendar of, uh, your town's fall tenure, Ms. Shirley.
Your graduation and your farmlands.
Sure. Forgive me, I do need to, one more, I need to call back to my
Anything else?
My birthday is Friday, May sixteenth.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, to present my presentation is basically to say that obviously everything's rolling up along with this resolution that we just passed. along with this resolution that we just passed. And things are being signed, there are things just signed this week. In the next month and a half, I'll have different meetings with the different bodies, class, TSBA, for their understandings and, uh, implement, implementation laws. So I will hold my meeting after all of those very smart people share their opinion with me about the way these will affect us. The reason I moved my update to now is it needs to be officially in the minutes. I've spoken with Mr. Bennett. TSBA has called for all of the resolutions to be submitted to TSBA for consideration in the fall meeting. I'm sorry, not the fall meeting, in the statewide meeting. And this is notification to the board that our resolution passed in last month's meeting will be one of those resolutions sent forward. The resolution we passed this evening has no bearing as it is over starting on July 1st, or June 1st, forgive me. So only the resolution we passed last week will be sent to TSBA. Anyone have any comments? Seeing no comments, thank you for letting me put that in the minutes.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
We stay in the germ.